Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to this April 24, 2020 council meeting. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Did you say my name? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Present.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes from the regular meeting of 7:13, 2020, and the special council meeting of 8:05, 2020, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion on the reading of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee prior to the council this evening and will again meet in, I think it's three weeks. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report except for ongoing meetings with the, about the Fire Committee and with the mayor and a few other representatives from the townships to discuss possibly increasing some of the staffing at the Fire Department. Other than that, no other meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you, Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Thank you, Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but I've asked the clerk of council to, starting with next week, to try to schedule a special legislation meeting so we can address DEMO, D E A R, and I believe it might be one other issue that I'll put the agenda out as soon as I know we have a date for the meeting to be scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no meeting scheduled at this time and no real report, but I would like to say that the South Broadway Brick Road is looking amazing, so if you haven't had a chance to check out the beautiful work they're doing, it's nice. Go for a walk.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Mrs. Hazel Time.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report at this time.
Emergency Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, and I'm looking to schedule a meeting in late September, early October.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for finance. We have 2160 budget amendments, 2161 state bid purchase of a Dodge Durango Building Department, 2162 expenditure of $15,000 for job creation grant for fiction products, 2163 expenditure of $15,000 for job creation grant for Progressive Medina LLC, 2164 grant application for the Ohio EPA electric vehicle charging stations, 2165 state bid for the purchase of two police cruisers from Lebanon Ford, 2166 trade-in two police vehicles at Lebanon Ford, 2167 2020 city auction, 2168 inter-urban building improvement agreement Medina Community Design, 2169 revocable use permit, Banana Brew Company wall sign, 2170 discussion at the MCRC full-time 32-hour work week, 2171 agreement for Spring Grove Cemetery drainage improvement, 2172 bids for the West Liberty Storm sewer improvement for the parking deck detention, 2173 LPA project agreement with ODOT West Smith Road Phase Four, and 2174 West Smith Road Phase Four Design Services Agreement. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding the COVID-19, I'd like to say thanks to the public for helping to reduce the spread by following the guidelines of social distancing, wearing masks in public and avoiding large gatherings. We are orange now versus red, which is a good accomplishment, but we need to keep it up. Updated information on the business openings, safety protocols, and the like are on the city and Medina County Health Department website, and I'd just like to ask everybody to do your best to help support our local businesses. The new parking deck immediately south of City Hall here is nearing completion. They're working on the landscaping and some punch lists, and if not open by the end of this week, it'll be very early next week. I'd like to ask the public to complete the U.S. Census forms if you have not already. It's important that the residents, all of our residents are counted. This helps us qualify for state and federal grants based on the numbers reporting. The original Medina Square Farmers Market opened its 15th season on our Medina Square on June 6, and it will run through October 17. The market is open from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM for guests over 59 or those that are immune compromised, and then from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM for the regular shoppers. The market is presented in a partnership with the city of Medina and sponsored by the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital. Due to social distancing requirements and concerns for the safety of guests and vendors, the market has been reduced to roughly 20 full-time vendors and another six to eight part-time vendors. A full selection of products will be offered, and for more information or to see the customer shopping guidelines, please visit medinafarmersmarket.com. The State of the City was presented to Medina City Council immediately before this meeting and will be presented virtually to the Medina area Chamber of Commerce on Tuesday, September 1. And last but not least, I'd like to encourage everyone to please take the survey for Fiber to the Home at www.madina.litcommunities.net. This fiber to the home started down in Lodi in Westfield, is working through Guilford Township and north through Montville Township, and Medina City is next, but we need a number of these surveys completed. The advantage of the fiber to the home versus our existing infrastructure is the county already has in place a fiber ring, so once the fibers run to the home, any number of vendors can get on that county fiber ring for a fee, and then you have competition with different phone companies, different video companies, different internet companies, all competing with one another, which is sorely lacking at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Department, as you know because you approved the purchase, we're working through the software conversion of our software. We expect the new software is going to be a big improvement, but we've learned that the process of converting to it is not something we'd wish on anybody. That's our main thing right now, and then we worked through the water when we went back to terminations and worked with a lot of customers to help them out and so on, so we appreciate what you had behind that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The South Broadway project is being placed right now and will be completed this week, and next week will be last stage and closed in a couple weeks. Probably should be completed. And I reported 2020 country program.
Thank you, Chief Kinney, Police Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. McColey, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Notices, communications, petitions, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to speak on any concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments should be directed at the chair in a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach their rear right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time?
Sir.
My name is Michael Ryan of 155 Rochon Drive, Medina, Ohio, and I'd like to comment on the proposed resolution number 146-20 on behalf of the Medina County Republican Liberty Caucus. Of course, the people of Medina and its city employees and leaders should oppose racism of any kind, but instead of simply saying that, the proposed resolution is intellectually dishonest and insulting to the city's residents, employees, and leaders. The first clause outlines 400 years of slavery and discrimination and Jim Crow laws and policies. This statement paints a false narrative of the condition of Ohio and the city of Medina specifically. Ohio was admitted into the Union in 1803 as a free state and from its inception expressly banned slavery in our state constitution. Ohioans were active in the abolitionist movement and a portion of the Underground Railroad ran through Medina. In fact, Medina proudly boasts the location of one such stop on the rail line at the corner of Jefferson and Washington by way of a historical marker. We do not insult this historical landmark with wild and unfounded accusations of systemic racism. Ohioans fought in and died for the Union Army paying the ultimate sacrifice to win the Civil War. They should be honored, not accused of being authors of systemic racism. The most successful Union generals, Grant, Sherman, Sheridan, were all from Ohio. This is nothing more than an inflammatory and false statement towards our state and city and its history and should be removed. This resolution singles out African-Americans as victims of discrimination and draws no attention to any other ethnic group like the Native American, Latino, Asian, or Jewish communities, just to name a few. It draws no attention to the present-day racial violence being inflicted upon Caucasian America, including those who dedicate their lives to this very cause. One clause directly insults Medina residents by declaring that many of us are simply too privileged to understand the effects of racism. Do you intend to state on the record that discrimination of any kind toward all other persons of any other ethnic background is acceptable? To say that white people can't understand or experience the trauma of discrimination that a black person can has gone through because of white privilege as we sit and watch women and children being beaten and maimed and killed just because they're white is an incredibly shallow and disgusting comment to make, directly or indirectly. Does one really know the history of a man merely by the color of his skin? Is that statement not racist in and of itself? Is there a different kind of rage for a different color of skin? Such a statement should find no place in any civil discourse, let alone a governmental document. The proposed resolution declares that this undefined systemic racism is a public health crisis akin to the COVID-19 virus. Does this council suggest that systemic racism exists in the city of Medina to the level of pandemic proportion? Is there evidence to support such a claim? Public emergencies typically require the expenditure of tax dollars. Given the city's limited budget, will council defund the Medina Police to pay for that effort? It is my understanding that our city is being sought out and emulated by other cities in the state and the state of Ohio itself with regard to our advanced administrative policies and best practices, some created in light of the tragic George Floyd murder and some that have been in place for years or decades prior to. If we need the declaration of a public health emergency against racism in Medina, does that indicate that racism is a crisis in Medina? If there is a crisis, why are we being sought out to be emulated as the best practice city? How can Medina be both a pioneer in social policing and administration and also in the heat of a crisis? Shouldn't this be a resolution praising the leaders of Medina for being proactive against racism instead? If this council is looking to stop out systemic racism, when can we expect to see a resolution from this council banning Planned Parenthood? There is no more systemically racist organization in our history and in our community than Planned Parenthood. This resolution is not unifying. It is grossly divisive, accusatory, and hateful. By addressing systemic racism toward only one ethnic people group during a period of time such as now filled with hate and violence and injustice, you have not fought against but instead created racism in the municipal government system, thus creating systemic racism. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Reverend?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Arthur Ruffin. I reside at 1125 Grove Lane here in Medina. Also want to talk about this resolution, number 146-20. I believe all of us, not only here in Medina, but I think wherever we live, realizes that racism takes place. I don't think it's the question of what ethnicity is being displayed or raced against. I do believe in the time that we live now, Black Lives is the number one on the chart. I would never stand here and say that there's another race that's not being discriminated against. As long as we live, everybody's going to be discriminated against, but there comes a time when there's one more than others, and right now it is the Black Lives, it is the African-Americans, and I don't believe that that's an insult to any other race. As we said at our demonstration that we had, we does not say that Black Lives Matter exclude all other lives. We're just saying that right now, the fire is on Black Lives. When I looked at this resolution, and I've probably seen three versions, I've realized in the last month or two that dialogue is very important in the city of Medina. I have sat and talked to people that I have seen for nine years. I've lived here nine years. I've met people that I've never talked to, I've never understood their life, and I began to see those individuals differently, not because of how I look at you, but how I hear your story. And I think when we look at society as a whole and we don't sit down and talk to one another and not make it a political thing, that we sit down and we talk to our brothers and our sisters and we say, "If we want to live in peace, let me hear how you feel. I may not agree with you, but I may be able to see things from your eyes that give me a different perspective on life." I have talked to so many people in offices now that makes me realize that life is filled with a lot of complications, and all we think about is us, me, us, I, me. It's not a community thing. I live in Medina because I thought this was a great place to live. This is where my wife grew up and wanted to come back here, and so when we sit down and we say we want to make Medina a better place, let's not look at it as Republican, let's not look at it as Democratic. Let's sit down and say, "How can we live together in peace and in harmony? How can I not make it about me, but make it about us?" When I looked at all three of these resolutions, I asked the question, I don't know who wrote them, who put them together, but my thing is, what is best for the city of Medina? I don't know how to write these. I don't know what whereas, who to, whatever means and all that, but there is somebody that writes these that do know. How can we write these to protect the city of Medina? Not protect me, not protect you, but protect us as a city. We come in and we meet every month, and we're not moving anywhere closer because we're fighting each other because we want what we want and not what's best for our city. I stand today to say, listen, I'm for right. Doesn't care whether you're Republican, whether you're Democrat, whether you're independent. I want to live in a city where people love me for who I am. I want to love you for who you are. I want to represent you for who you are. This is not a political thing for me. If this resolution is not written up right, we need to take it back, sit down, and reword it where it protects the city of Medina and it protects the individuals that we're talking about. I think we've gotten to the point now to where it's just, everything seems like it got to be political, we got to be in a hurry, we got to get it done. If we love our city, that means that we love each individual that lives in this city. So whatever I do, I want to do it that it protects you, that it protects you, that it protects you, and that it protects me, and not just look out for the one person. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to address council? Mr. Shields?
First, I'd like to commend the mayor on your State of the City report and the council for everything that you do in our city. I'm here to speak to you primarily, something I had prepared last March, but I never found the right time to present it. I'm hoping this might be it. My name is Stan Shields. I'm an attorney here in Medina and have been for the past 45 years. My offices are at 225 East Liberty. I live at 342 East Liberty. Been a resident of Medina County since 1957. Been the law director for three other villages in the area, so I think I have some reason and right to be speaking about this subject. I respectfully assert that Medina City Government, the mayor, council, have progressively diminished the trust and transparency within its constituents over the past eight to 10 years in relation to the operation of City Hall, the government, the council, and the boards and commissions. Any previous trust and transparency built by previous administrations has been eroded during these past eight years by both the mayor, the president pro tem, and the council members at large. There has been absolutely no diversity on our council the past years of thought, complexion, gender, ethnic background, or opinions, as our magnificent seven white males have dominated the council for the past 16 to 20 years. I said dominated, I didn't say there wasn't one or two occasionally. I'm happy to see him sitting, or sitting there. Our council has become our Knights of the Round Table, gathering bi-monthly, expounding the virtues of diversity, transparency, and trust, while many of the decisions go on behind the scenes and before there's actually public vetting of various issues. I contend it's time for a change and that council should consider term limits of council members and mayors serving in the Medina City. I feel that eight years, two terms, is enough for almost any politician to serve in a specific position. I did not bring this up during the last election because six of you, five or six, were up for election, but when there's not an election going on, I think it's an ideal time to be considering this. I think we need new blood, we need new ideas, and new visions for our city moving forward. In addition, true leaders must recognize trends and adapt to the future, and Medina City motto, preserving the past and forging the future. And we need a mayor that leads the council and commissions forward beyond their comfort zones, not just doing the same thing or representing totally the status quo. I have attended council meetings here for 45 years, and I've seen firsthand how most decisions are being forged behind the scenes by lobbying of various ward members with council members, with zoning and planning commissions, with the Board of Zoning Appeals, before any public hearings are actually held, before the issues are properly vetted before the public, before the pros and cons are weighed by these specific boards and commissions that are supposed to be unbiased commissions considering various things. The mayor calls this government by consensus. I see it as council by quid pro quo. You vote for what I need in my ward, I'll vote for what you need in my ward, or I'll vote to keep it out of my ward. I do not believe this is healthy government. As it be a vibrant responsive government, you must vet the pros and cons publicly of all issues that are on the table before an unbiased commission and boards and not to be tainted with preposteried positions of the mayor or various ward members. Today's mayor, Dennis Hanwell, was a very good police captain and administrator. However, I do not see him as a visionary bringing the city forward. I see him as a micromanager of every department, commission, from engineering to service to zoning and planning, right down to the cemetery commission, and he thinks he must shepherd and micromanage every decision, which leaves very little opportunity for growth of various staff members or department heads in any capacity when you're serving at will and can be fired at any time if you're not in lockstep with the administration. I have spent four decades working with cities, villages, and townships on strategic plans. Four decades I have seen these plans sit on the shelf, rarely being implemented, only being pulled out to defeat or deny when new ideas come forward. We hear about fake news daily. I contend we are experiencing even worse sometimes in the city of Medina. Sometimes we're experiencing fake government by suits posturing, predetermined decisions without full debate. I believe this is undue influence by lobbying of the mayor and council members to these board members and commission members before the actual hearings. I believe it's time for a change sooner rather than later, for forward-thinking legislation to be considered to limit terms to two year, two terms, eight years for all public officials. If you're that good at what you do, go on and serve somewhere else and use your expertise there, but let us have some new ideas expounded and let us understand that strategic planning and progress go hand in hand with preservation, but neither will survive long-term without the other. We must encourage healthy constructive debate of all issues publicly to ensure Medina City remains one of the best communities to grow, live, and play in our area. And I thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pam Miller, 450 Woodland Drive, Medina. I would like to applaud council for considering the resolution on racism on tonight's agenda. It is a testament to the city's ongoing commitment supporting diversity and your willingness to demonstrate to the community that we are a city that is welcoming and concerned about the well-being of all who live and work here, regardless of the color of their skin. This resolution grew out of two disasters, the murder of George Floyd and other black Americans, and the disproportionate effect of COVID-19 on people of color. The resolution before you details the concern about racism against African-Americans, but it also recognizes, quote, "That racial bias exists throughout our country in the treatment of all people of color." This resolution as presented is not intended to limit its focus, but to include all people of color, black, brown, indigenous, Asian. Therefore, I would respectfully suggest that the title of this resolution should be a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis rather than the more limiting title on your agenda. Other cities in northeast Ohio have passed resolutions with nearly identical language and have kept the more general identification of racism. You could, of course, amend the language if you desired, but I think that the message is stated clearly and that the title that was originally proposed itself lends credence to that message. Racism is racism. Finally, it's important for the community to know that a resolution like this is not binding. It is not a law, but it is a statement that reminds council to carefully examine policies and ordinances, to look through a racial bias, if you will, a racial lens, if you will, to make sure that they are equitable toward all. And this resolution declaring racism a public health crisis is a means of building awareness that pervasive racism exists, that its effects are catastrophic, and that we will be a better community if we work together to eliminate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to address council?
Yes. My name is Sandra Thomas Fain, and my address is 3734 Lester Road, Medina. I was born, I'm a proud black woman, born and raised here in Medina, and I went away to school, came back because Medina is my home, Medina is what I love, but Medina still was a racist community. But, you know, we dealt with it. Anyone who thinks that there's not racism in Medina County is living in a different world than what I live in. I'm not, and all racism is not killing in that you have to deal with racism mentally, not only physically, mentally, emotionally. You know, when our children still don't, can't go out and our young, especially our young black men can't go out without being afraid of being arrested, not so much in Medina, because we really have, the Medina Police Department really has worked at, you know, bringing the community together and community policing and that, but I mean, there's still some racists on the police department because we are individuals. The way we were raised, the raise we were taught, the way we were taught, that formed our opinions of people, and people of color and otherwise. But I tell you that this resolution is much needed. I am grateful that it's even being brought up. I hope it passes. You know, there could be some little, you know, tweaking of wordsmithing, you know, some wordsmithing going on, but other than that, it has to be, you know, the gentleman said about Medina being a beacon in the... said about Medina being a beacon in the, at the state level, whatever. This is another light coming from Medina. This is another, another reason for them coming to Medina and recognizing Medina, because Medina no longer has their head in the sand. You know, you can't keep your head in the sand forever. I mean, Medina was, had their heads in the sand for a long time about drugs being in Medina, about prostitution being Medina. You know, all these ugly things didn't happen in Medina. When I was growing up, one of the selling real estate things to be, having people move to Medina, there was only 2% minority in Medina. That's what the Realtors was bringing people in on. And so, and a lot, lot we can live where we can afford in Medina now. I was, like I tell you, I was raised in Medina, there's only certain places we could, we could live, there's only certain places we could go comfortably. I remember as an eight-year-old up here on the square, going through, in a store, and being followed. Now, I was with a little, another little white girlfriend of mine, and she went, we knew, I mean, we were not foolish. I went one way, she went the other way, and I was followed, she was not. And I picked up, I picked up some things, nothing that I could not afford, and then when I got up to the, when I got up to the cashier, I laid them down, showed them my money, and I said, "I can afford anything that I've picked up," and walked out of the store, because it was insulting to be treated like that. And my girlfriend, she was crying. I wasn't, I wasn't crying, because, I mean, it was nothing. It was something to me, but it was not devastating to me any longer, even at eight years old. I remember seeing a cross burned in Medina, on the west side of Medina. And this, this, they had the hoods on, the whole KKK thing, and you know, Medina County was the area where the KKK flourished. You know, Lodi was the, who was it? The grand, grandpoo of KKK, what I, can't remember what he was called now, but he was, he was, he was from Lodi. But when this cross was burning, I was, I was about six or seven years old, we were out playing, and the guy, this guy in the hood came up and said, "Well, girl, you really need to go home, this is not a place for you." Because we were running, because, you know, there was bonfire, we thought, I don't, we didn't, we didn't really realize what was going on. And he just said, very, very nicely and very gently, "Little girl, you, you need to go home, this is not a place for you." And that was, that was a white man in a hood, but he was, he was, he was not there to do me any harm, or the children any harm. I don't know what he was doing there, but, but I appreciate the council bringing this forward, and I just, I appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bruce Gold, 407 Providence. Words mean something. Words matter. And the way this resolution was written has no force, has no resolution, has no ideas on how to solve the problem. Again, this is symbolism over substance, and that's all it is. It's symbolic without any meaning. What we need to do is if we have this problem, then we need to address it and come up with solutions to solve the situation, instead of just having words and talking about it. We've had this very much so in the recent year, when we looked at issues like the plastic bags and straws. Didn't matter that in the United States, it's been illegal to dump offshore into the oceans, but we wanted to have a, a nice sounding resolution. Same thing with the LGBT. It was a resolution with no teeth. And I don't see anything where the, the problem with systemic racism being a public health crisis. I don't see it as a health crisis, because it's not addressing, it's not saying that there are other people who get better health care, or there's more opportunities to expand your choices for health care. I myself, due to circumstances in selling a business, I had to have the Unaffordable Health Care Act step in. I, I went and tripled the cost of my health care for me and my family, and it was, the quality of care was much worse. So it doesn't matter whether you're white, black, brown, I don't care. We have other issues and better ways to address it. In the point, specifically point number three, it says that the, and it's found and determined that formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council. I beg to differ. The majority of this resolution was resolved behind the scenes, not in an open meeting. When it was first brought up at the finance meeting, you did very little discussion of bullet points to put into the resolution. If you really want to make something stick and make it with some type of teeth into it, why don't we have more of a public input on what needs to be involved in this? Because right now, the resolution doesn't have any teeth, it's symbolism over substance. As a business owner in this community, I have so many regulations I have to, to work with. I have to work with OSHA. OSHA, they change daily what they want and how you have to follow rules and laws. And when you're adopting these rule changes, the difference from one office to another, heck, the office to office interaction with resolutions with OSHA is crazy. I've got so many things that I'm trying to address. By adding these types of resolutions and the other ones in the past that I had discussed, puts a burden on business owners. You want to grow your community? You want business to thrive here? We need to stop making things that sound good and develop programs, to develop policies that will make a difference and affect people, to help them change their circumstances. This resolution does nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council?
My name is Ann Bednarski. I live at 105 Stirbridge Drive, Medina, Ohio. You have a copy, is that, does everyone have a copy of what I wrote? Okay, I don't want to talk about that. I want to say, this gentleman here and that man there, both brought up some very interesting points. When I was born, about 45 minutes later, I had a twin sister who was born. And for the first 18 months of my life, people would look at me and actually scream. You know why? My left eye was traveling, and they'd say, "Ah, she only has one eye." And my sister was real little, and they'd say, "Oh, look how cute her sister is, she's so cute, and poor Ann." I was so sick of being poor Ann that somewhere, somehow, I decided I have to be able to live with this in order to survive. And, and then when I started kindergarten, not only was I the only student in the school who wore real true blue Coke bottle glasses, and I'd get, I got called every name you could be called. And my mother said to me once, "Do you not want to wear those glasses?" I said, "I want the glasses, I'll, I'll crack into a wall if I don't have the glasses." But I learned, I had to use, I had to learn to cope with not only a perfect twin sister, but a very bad eye. And I have had a terrific career. I have taught 7,500 students as a tutor and a teacher from five continents, including Africa, Australia, Asia, Europe, and Australia, Africa, anyway. I, I taught a lot of students, and I have found, I don't look at you and say, "Gee, you're a nice-looking white man." I don't look at you and say, "You're an older gentleman." I say, "You had something I was interested in, so did you." I don't like to judge people for how they look or what they stand for. And when we have been watching, and trust me when I say, I have been crying often, seeing all the destruction in all these cities in America, and it's pathetic, we have to stop. And we don't need a resolution that focuses on one thing, because there's so many, and everybody has one thing they have to deal with, and we deal with it. That's what I have to say. I agree with whoever said, "This resolution doesn't do anything except separate people." I think that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Joanne Campbell. I live at 1111 Woodland Circle, Medina, Ohio. Dear Medina City Council Members, contemplating how best to address this anti-racism resolution, I must admit I searched for signs of a racial health crisis to no avail. Where are the signs? So I did a little research. Seventeen cities and counties have, within the last two months, passed similar resolutions, such as the one proposed this evening, declaring racism a public health crisis deserving immediate action and condemnation. Twenty states have enacted the same. In addition to this push, attempts to insert the radical 1619 Project is being adopted in surrounding school systems in similar fashion. Our Ohio Board of Education passed the 1619 Project just a short time ago with little discussion or review. The goal: to indoctrinate our children to believe the lie that Americans are systemically racist because of slavery in our past, and that our revolutionary war for independence from England was really fought to preserve slavery, not gain our freedoms. Along the same vein, diversity and inclusive policies for police officers are being forced in these areas as well, based on the assumption that blacks and minorities are disproportionately targeted and killed by privileged white officers who are part of an institutionally racist system. But the problem with this narrative, driven by Marxist organizations such as Black Lives Matter, is that it is factually untrue. In fact, statistics show that white officers are no more likely than those of color or of Asian descent to shoot black civilians. According to the latest study issued in the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences, "The more frequently officers encounter violent suspects, the greater the chance that members of that racial group will be shot by a police officer." So it is not a question of skin color, but of how many instances of violence one engages in that determines one's likelihood of being involved in a shooting with police. Nevertheless, the pressure to include diversity training based on this false narrative is mounting. The common denominator that links these cities and states is that they emanate predominantly from leftist-controlled areas, and this is significant. There is an obvious agenda behind the manufactured divide created between blacks and whites. This is nothing new, but was a strategy of Karl Marx as outlined in the Communist Manifesto, with the aim of using identity politics and class divisions to exterminate private property in the name of social justice and equality while destroying capitalism and freedom. I urge you to resist the temptation to pass this feel-good measure that is but the first step in the plan of Marxists, like co-founder of Black Lives Matter, Patrice Cullors, and others on the left, to stir animosity and hatred between groups, fan the flames of violence, and ultimately attempt to destroy the freedoms of America through socialism and communism. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? I think we got everybody. Well, we already had an opportunity to speak. Okay, thank you. Introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 14120, ordinance 14220, ordinance 14320, resolution 14520, resolution 14620, ordinance 14720, resolution 14820, resolution 14920, ordinance 15020, and ordinance 15120.
I will move to suspend the rules requiring three readings for tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second.
Is there any discussion on suspending the rules? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yep.
Motion passes 7-0.
Ordinance 14120, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2020 concrete pavement joint ceiling program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton. I don't think your mic's on. Is it on? No. Got that one. Thank you. Oh, there you are.
This is our annual resolution, our annual program to maintain our streets through crack ceiling. This year, we're asking for $50,000.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 141-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 14220, and ordinance amending ordinance number 14919, passed July 31, 2019, relative to the payment for the design-build contract with CPS Construction Inc. for the design and construction of the City Hall parking structure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. This is actually a reduction in the cost of the parking deck is largely paid for. We omitted the canopy, and we omitted the requirement for the detention. The city is going to install the detention as discussed at Finance Committee, but this reduces the cost of the parking deck by a little over $73,000.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 142-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 14320, and ordinance authorizing expenditure to I2C Technologies LTD to purchase security cameras for the City Hall parking deck.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
This was one of the items that we got a credit from the design builder in the last ordinance, was the security cameras. We elected to install our own. This will pay for that. I would respectfully request the emergency clause. We submit this before the break, and seeing as the parking deck's about to open, we'd like to get the cameras installed as soon as we can.
Thank you. One question, how many cameras are you going to have in there?
There'll be 28, 17 on the first floor and 11 on the second floor.
All right. That's a lot. Is there a motion to add the emergency clause?
I'll amend my motion to include the emergency clause.
And my second will include the emergency clause.
Any discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 143-20 passes 7-0.
Resolution 144-20 has asked to be tabled, Mr. Patton?
Yes. We prepared this before the break, as we usually do, because this program, which is the State of Ohio Public Works Commission grant that pays for quite a bit of our street projects, is typically due around the 1st of September, so we always have to pass the ordinance prior to submitting the grant app. This year, I think we discussed it finance before the break, and weren't sure what was going to happen with the program. I'm happy to say that the state is going forward with their program, and it looks like it will get full funding, which for us will mean a grant in the range of $450,000 to $500,000 for a street project. We just learned about this last week. The one thing is that they've just delayed it. The applications aren't due till November, so we'd like to take some time administratively and select a project, appropriate project, and we'll bring that back to you at a future date.
Thank you. Resolution 145-20, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement for the acceptance of a 1/3 stipend from Alternative Paths for the CIT Support and Expansion Project, CIT Initiative Program for the Police Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're requesting acceptance of the $1,500 stipend from Alternative Paths. This is to offset the personnel costs. We're assigning an officer to be a liaison for our crisis intervention team. This is to augment that service and that collaboration between us and Alternative Paths for our ongoing commitment to de-escalation training and use of force training.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Resolution 145-20 passes 7-0.
Resolution 146-20, a resolution declaring African-American racism a public health crisis.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard from several residents, and I want to thank each and every one of you who addressed us. Very, very good commentary. I appreciate it. We've had from Pam, Mrs. Miller, the person who initially presented this, and Pastor Ruffin, and Mr. Gold to maybe work on the wording with this. I would suggest that we listen to what they said, and I would be glad to work on a committee with Pam and Pastor Ruffin to work on the wording that they think would be best for the community.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Paul's point or any other point on the ordinance, a resolution?
I would suggest that we have reviewed it. We have discussed it. It's clearly a... We had a rather long discussion. My memory serves me well at the last council meeting that we had. And it is a resolution that I think, you know, someone said, "Well, it's a feel-good resolution." Well, I feel good about the resolution. I think that it's not enforceable. It's not a law. It is a message, and it is more about education. And I think that's important. Contrary to what was said about the LGBTQ legislation, that was not a resolution. Those were ordinances that had the force of law. That was not a resolution. This is a resolution defined as an intention, and this is an intention to deal with an issue that many of us recognize. You may not see it right here, or you may not see it right here, or you may not see it at all. It exists very much in people's heads, and it's important that we signify what this community stands for in exactly the same way we did when we passed the equality legislation. People want to simply live their lives, live their lives out. That's what they want to do. There will always be suffering. There will always be pain. All of us deal with whether we are black, white, Asian, we deal with life's hurdles. But the best thing we can do is to try to remove the hurdles that we can so that we limit suffering and we limit pain. And a resolution is a good step forward, is a statement of what this community stands for, as we have stood for many great things in the past, as was pointed out. This was... There were numerous stops in Medina on the Underground Railroad, and I was glad you brought that up. Spring Grove Cemetery, as a matter of fact, is a union cemetery. We fought against the ugliest, one of the ugliest institutions in this country, and that was the institution of slavery. It was the compromise in order to pass the Constitution. That's why it existed. Every country, every advanced country by 1860 had abolished slavery, with the exception of the United States. We were created, all men are created equal, but all men weren't created equal. Men of wealth with property were able to vote. African-Americans were slaves. Women couldn't vote. Native Americans couldn't vote. And in the evolution of this country, the great thing about this country is we have evolved. It's sad that it's taken us so long in many areas, but we have evolved decade by decade, century by century, until we actually are a country that recognizes the importance of every human being because we strive for equality, true equality. This resolution carries no weight of law. It forces no one to do anything. Not a cent of city money will be spent. But what it says is a very important message, that we recognize this is an important overriding issue, and it affects many, many people, often in very quiet ways, that we need to recognize. So I say we go forward with it. We pass it. Send the message.
Thank you. Is anybody else that wishes to comment? Mr. President?
Just two comments. First of all, Mrs. Miller, thank you so much for the hard work that you've put in, not only this, but the diversity project. Pastor Ruffin, I enjoyed your comments, especially when you talked about getting to know each other and to understand, you know, I've got some American Indian heritage and, you know, the saying of, you know, "You don't know somebody until you walk a mile in their moccasins." It's true. I'm supporting this resolution, and I agree with Bill. I think we should pass it tonight. Again, it's a resolution, not an ordinance, so there's no weight of law. But what the weight it should have is to maybe more citizens, not everybody, but maybe more citizens will actually look at, saying, "You know, I really don't know my neighbor. I don't know what..." Everybody has problems, just like you said. It might be different than my problem, but everybody's got problems. And to start a dialogue, so I'm hoping that, and Mrs. Miller, I'm so glad that you did your comments tonight, where you stated it's not just specifically on black lives, even though, you know, there has been some tragedies recently that I was comfortable with just making it Black Lives Matter. But I'm glad that we are changing it to all ethnicities, all religions, everybody. You know, I always, you know, and I've seen recently on Facebook that people make fun of me for my comments of being kind to one another. If that makes you feel good about yourself, go ahead and make those comments. I'm serious about it. We do have to be a society where we start being kinder to one another, and that starts at the top. It starts with the President of the United States, all the congressional members, down to the state level and down to the local levels. And I think if we can practice being kind to one another, getting to know one another, not judging other people, I think we'll have a better society. And I think that this resolution may help that move along in our community, and I thank you for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Hazelton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also stand in support, strong support, of this resolution. I have seen firsthand, when I spoke at one of the events on the square, when they had the marches and the other events, and the first thing that I said to this group gathered of African-American people was, "Hi, my name's Jess Hazelton, and I represent Ward 1. Does anybody know what that means?" And every single person nodded their head because they know that Ward 1 is a gerrymandered section of Medina where African-Americans live, and they are happy to have representation. I represent Ward 1. I represent those people. They deserve this resolution. It is necessary. Privilege, which was spoken of earlier, is when a problem does not personally affect you. That does not mean it is not a problem just because you don't see it. I see it every day in Ward 1, and it needs to stop. Those of you that spoke that this resolution is just words, I suggest you speak with Mrs. Miller afterwards, or Pastor Ruffin, who both lead initiatives on changing this in Medina. I suggest, as you did with Pastor Ruffin, open a dialogue. And he is willing, he stated that he is willing to open that dialogue with you. So I would suggest that you speak with him, or Mrs. Miller, who does the Medina Diversity Project. And let's get some change happen. But let's let this resolution stand as a beacon of light. You know, someone spoke earlier, I believe it was Mr. Ryan, about if there's a crisis, how can we be lauded for our efforts? Because we recognize the crisis and we're doing something about it. I strongly stand in support of this resolution, and I will happily vote for it.
Is there anybody else that has any comments?
Mr. President?
Ms. Shields?
I just wanted to say, Pastor Ruffin, I've known you since you came to Medina. I appreciated everything you said tonight. I know you were here as a citizen, but you were preaching to me tonight, and that's a great sermon that probably everybody in Medina needs to hear, the lot of things that you said tonight. And I just really appreciate it. I've appreciated it since I first met you. I have read through this so many times, trying to figure out, why is there so much controversy with this? And I'm struggling, because everything in there I agree with. It's easy to agree with, and it's the right thing to agree with, I guess, in my opinion. So I'm okay with moving forward with this.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Heffinger, you got anything? Well, it sounds like, Paul, that everybody wants to move forward with it, or at least the majority of council members would like to move forward with it. My opinion is that there was a lot said, and there's a lot of things that could be changed. But again, in any legislation that we pass, whether it be a resolution of support or an ordinance, there's always things that could be done better. But we make it bogged down in the details to try to get everything we want. I guess the message that I see is that we take one break at a time and try to do the best we can for what we have in front of us, including trying to make sure that the message that we're trying to send is that we're against racism, any kind of racism. And it's been a spotlight on African-American racism currently, and I think that's why the title was changed the way it was. But you're correct, there's always ways to better things, and I think you have to start somewhere. Because if you don't start somewhere, and you always try to reach the finish line before you start at the start line, you'll never get anything accomplished. So I guess I'm in support of sending the message that, yeah, we are against racism. I think it's a common thing that we all should be against, in whatever form it presents itself. And the fact that we're focusing on, or appears that we're focusing on, at least in the title, African-American racism, is because it is the most prevalent racism we know of today. Racism goes on everywhere, so I think we're just trying to send a message, let's stop racism. I mean, we got to talk to our neighbor. Let's start there. There's nothing more that's being said in this resolution except for that. Of course, there's all kinds of things that could be changed and make it different, but, you know, I don't know how much time we have, because we could discuss this for months to try to change it to the way we want it. So that's just my opinion. Is there any other comments on counsel?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
First of all, I just want to iterate here. Pastor Ruffin and I have had several conversations about this. And my, back when we discussed this prior to this meeting, I did send Pam Miller and President Coyne a copy of what I thought it was. I believe it should be all-inclusive of all racism. And those are the words that concern me. Another thing is, I've yet to hear what happens when we use the phrase, "Declaring a public health crisis." What happens to the community? What happens to the city? What happens to an entity, whatever? I hear anything from, well, nothing, to, well, it frees up certain dollars, to an unelected bureaucrat can come in and close a business. Nobody can answer the question. So I really don't know. And that's why I'm concerned with the wording. And that's it. Should we be against racism? Absolutely. There's no, never been a question about that. It's just, what are these words telling the world? That's my concern. And I just don't want to have something somewhere down the line where some slick lawyer says, "You said this in this ordinance or this resolution, but because of that, the city now has to..." Okay? And fill in the blank. That's what I'm looking at. Okay?
Thank you. Any other comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Abstain.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Resolution 146-20 passes 681 abstention.
Ordinance 147-20, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2019 Mack TE64R front loader from Bell Equipment Company for the sanitation department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. McCulley?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you recall, this past February, council authorized the grant application to the Ohio EPA for the purchase of this garbage truck, a front loader. As such, the grant program, we learned in the beginning of June, was suspended for the 2020 season and possibly 2021. Facts are, we still need this vehicle to be used both in the commercial use and the yard waste program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Ordinance 147-20 passes 7-0.
Resolution 148-20, a resolution accepting the donation of face masks from Tempur Sealy International, Inc.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Who's handling this one? Anybody know about this one?
Maybe Jonathan.
Mayor?
I thought Jonathan was here. So this is a donation from Tempur Sealy of face masks to the city of Medina. I don't know the amount off the top of my head. It was valued at $1,050, and we'd like to thank Tempur Sealy and ask council to authorize this resolution, please.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a couple cases of hand sanitizer donated to the City of Medina by our local business, Alchem Incorporated, and it was valued at $698. And I'd respectfully ask council's approval of it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Would a clerk please call the role on the adoption of the resolution?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Resolution 149-20 passes, 7-0.
Ordnance 150-20, an ordinance establishing the Coronavirus Relief Fund, number 170, for the City of Medina.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. These funds are required to be tracked through us having a fund here at the city. We're asking for emergencies so we can move the funds. We're going to move the expenditures that we've been tracking with the job code into this fund. But we're going to have to clear each one to make sure that it's approved, because we started that before we knew what this grant was going to be, and then we'll be able to get this.
Thank you. How much money do we receive in this grant?
Up to, it's, what is it, about a half a million?
Yeah, I think it was $530,000.
It's right around a half a million dollars. So we've got to show expenditures to that in order to get it, because we receive only what we spend, and the rest has to be returned.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the role on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Would a clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordnance 150-20 passes, 7-0.
Ordnance 151-20, an ordinance amending ordinance number 18719, passed November 25, 2019, amendments to the 2020 budget.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are two additions. They are both from mountain bike trails, and they're a pass-through of money that we received. And then there's a group of reductions that came out of the budget meeting.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordnance 151-20 passes, 7-0.
Council comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
There's several things I could go over, but in trying to save some time, I just want to address two things. Mr. Sheets, I've considered you a friend, and I respect your opinion on most things. I have to, not on the term limits, I have not made a decision on how I feel about that. I've had a lot of discussions with a lot of different people. But your comments about the current council and the current mayor in the last eight, 10 years, being working behind closed doors, deciding things before it's ever brought to the floor, has hurt the city, and the city's in horrible shape because of it. That's just simply not true. I mean, absolutely, 100% not true. Prior to the virus hitting, the city in the industrial area, I believe it was 99% filled. In the other stores uptown, the businesses uptown, and in the shopping center, we're basically at 100%. Housing in Medina is, especially for rental units, it's, the people can't find places to rent. So I think the city's been in really good shape the last 10 years. I think it's been a collaborative effort. I don't think there's been anything under the table. I know there hasn't been on this board. I can tell you, I have worked with only two administrations as far as mayors. Both of them have been above board. Mayor Hanwell, I can say, has worked not only well with council. We don't always agree on everything, but worked well with the department heads and does everything in his power, sometimes more than 16 hours a day. I'm sure he's been up at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning with some residents, calling with concerns or problems, and he doesn't hesitate to address them. So I do take offense to your comments about needing change because of the underhandedness of this board and this administration and these department heads. Other than that, again, I respect you, and I consider you a friend. I just think you're misguided on those points. And the only other comment I want to make is that we do need to work to try to be kind to one another. Thank you.
Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I echo a bit what Councilman Simpson just said? Because, as you stated, we need new blood on the council. And I guess that would be me, since I've only been here two years.
And Jess.
Would be the new blood. And I've never seen the accusations that you've thrown at this council or this administration. I don't know if I agree with you on term limits or not. It's something we're definitely worth talking about. I've also noticed tonight a lot of accusations against the process on how we pass things in the city here. Some of those claims, you know, maybe do need to be addressed. And it's how do we let this, the citizens of Medina know what we're doing better? We do do these meetings in public, but nobody seems to watch them or listen to them until we get to the actual council meeting, right? They watch the council, they watch the actual passage, not most of the debates, which happen beforehand in public. So I'm more than willing to listen to ideas and how we can better get those ideas out there. So it doesn't seem like things are rushed through. Because for us, they're not rushed. We've been talking about these things for months. But for the public, it's, oh, we just heard about this thing yesterday. So maybe that is a problem, but it's not because we're hiding things, that's for sure. And to defend the mayor here, I think the mayor is doing an outstanding job during this pandemic and everything else that's been going on. And I want to point out, one specific example is, this summer, I went to both the Black Lives Matter protest and to the Back the Blue demonstration on the square. And the mayor was there also with Pastor Ruffin's. And they had a same message for both groups, that these ideas are not polar opposites. We can attack both problems at the same time. We can have a strong police department that takes care of us, because we need that in our community. And we can also address that there are problems that we need to fix. So I just, I have to compliment that. As the only elected official that got up there and said those things publicly, they weren't just attacking the different movements, was there to say, yes, we can attack two problems at the same time. So I want to compliment him on that, because I think he's been doing a great job leading here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coin.
Mrs. Shields.
I appreciate that I sat here and debated whether to say something. I've known Stan almost my whole life, too. Consider him a friend. I was a little taken back by some of those comments. I get it. And, but I'm telling you, I'm here on council. I've run six times. Five of those, I had nobody who wanted to run against me. I'm not sitting here because I want to control this, as seven white men, as you said. I care about this city. I was born and raised here. For me, it's all about doing what's best for this community and these residents. And that is the only reason I'm here, because I love this city. You've had, I think, just to be fair, you need to let people know, you've been turned down by planning and council for development projects, one of which, right, one of which I voted yes for, one I voted no for. But boy, it sure seems that you turned on me when I voted no against one of your projects. So I think that's fair, that people know that detail, too. But I'm all for more people on this council. I have welcomed Eric, I've welcomed Jess, I've welcomed everybody who's ever been on here. When they came on, it's great for the city. And if somebody wants to run and take the seat, I'm okay with that. I'm still going to do what I do to make Medina a better place. And that's how I think the seven of us try to approach our jobs. So I just need to say that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
I'll go. I have a few things I want to... Do you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
Your call.
I'd rather go last.
All right. Well, a few things here. I agree with everything that's been said. As far as Mr. Sheets' comments, which seem to be, you know, quite the issue. I do agree about the diversity part. I'm very proud to be the 11th woman who has served on this council in 200 years. So to me, that's progress. We're going in the right direction. Since I have been here, there have not been any clandestine meetings where people have talked secretly unless they're just not inviting me. You know, everything has been on the up and up. Bill and I have coffee with Bill and Jess on Medina TV, and we just spoke about this last Thursday. Someone had made, you know, something about council, and we said, everyone on council has their certain strengths and how they contribute. And I just want to stress that even when we don't agree on things, we are a great council. I am polar opposite of some people on council, and they have never been mean to me. They have never said anything disparaging to me. I think we have a great organization here. I think that we do a good job. And again, I have never experienced anything, like, talked about behind closed doors. And I think that Mr. Heffinger is correct in that people only tune in for the council meeting. For instance, the racism resolution, I believe this is the third time it's been on the agenda. So it's been talked about at length. I also wanted to remind people, again, the ward meetings are canceled right now, Ward One and Ward Two. And the reason that Councilman Lamb and I had made coffee with Bill and Jess was in place of these ward meetings. So we encourage people to tune into Medina TV. You can watch it on Facebook Live, every Thursday at 10:30. This week, we'll be having the new Main Street Medina Farmers Market Manager on. She'll be talking about the SNAP cards that they received a grant from, that they'll be able to distribute. So she'll be telling people about that. But we really do our best to be transparent, and especially in these times of the pandemic, what's going on in this city, what will keep people apprised of the projects. And we really want to encourage that back-and-forth dialogue. You know, people may have been offended by Mr. Sheets' comments tonight, but I personally truly appreciate them. And we need to know what the people think, or we can't fix it, even if we don't know that it's wrong. Some people, you know, don't recognize racism in Medina. But we've acknowledged it now, and we're moving forward. So I think those are all great things. That's all I can remember that I wanted to say, because a lot went on tonight. But I give the floor to either Mr. Rose or Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Lamb, you're on top.
Okay, thanks. Well, I think it was a good night, actually. Pastor Ruffin, great to see you, great to have you here. I know Second Baptist Church, since Reverend Burton was there when we were working in Ward One, and we had a, our slogan was, "Ward One Gets It Done." And I think we had T-shirts to that effect. And I think tonight shows we're still working at it. We're still all working together. Pam is always putting this stuff together for us, the diversity project. My friend, Deb Halick, you know, go all the way back to your dad and the swimming pool, and you're carrying on with a swimming pool that was so much a part of your family, kind of, that family history, you know, is great. Stan, I hate to say this, but, and I don't hate to say, I've known you, everybody says they've known you forever, and not thrilled about, I guess, what you said. I proposed term limits at one time. I suggested it. We had a discussion about it. And it wasn't successful. And, you know, the longer I've been with these folks on city council, I guess you have to look at everything individually. And my sense is, this is, you know, this is a really good group. And as Eric said, you know, and my feeling is, too, I only want to run twice. I was mayor for two terms. You know, I'm not running again. I welcome new blood. I have worked to elect four women to city council, including the only black woman ever elected to city council. I like diversity on city council, but I don't think you can just button, you know, buttonhole it and go, you know, we're some older guys up here, and we never, we never go away. Get elected, you know? As George H.W. Bush said, you know, if you run for, you don't get elected, you can't do anything. You know, the only thing that matters is actually get elected. And people are welcome to do that. Sometimes people run, and sometimes people don't. You know, like Jim said, people don't run against you. It does make you wonder. I think it's a great council. But the one thing I really take exception to is the comments about the mayor. You know, I've known, I've known him since he was just Dennis Hanwell, all the way through to being Mayor Hanwell. And he and I clearly have, you know, we have agreements, we have disagreements. I think we're both, you know, if we step out of this building, we're probably in different partisan political parties. But I think that that was unfair. And my view of the work that the mayor has done has really been masterful. I don't know that you can ask for a more energetic, thoughtful, considerate, one of the best human, one of the best people I've ever met in my entire life as far as listening, actually disagreeing with you, but listening, hearing you out and trying to find, come to a resolution so things work. And I think he does have vision. I think he is responsible for the continued success of this community. I think he, I think he is in large part singularly responsible for this period of time and the success in this community, because he knows how to bring people together. And I guarantee you, there's nothing that goes on, I don't see anything go on here, you know, that isn't pretty public. No secret meetings, no discussions. You know, it's all up and above board, and debated and argued in public, and it comes out. And frequently, I mean, we disagree on issues. We vote, and it's not always a seven-for-nothing vote. But the truth is, much of this does get hashed out in committee and in finance committee meeting. But I think that once, I think that Dennis Hanwell leaves big shoes to fill when he decides not to run for mayor. And I am glad that he's here, and I've been one of the thrills of my life, actually, to be able to work with somebody with that, with the character and the morals and the values that this guy has. So I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't add anything more to defend the mayor and the administration. This is one hell of a team. And I wouldn't hesitate for a minute to come and work for him if I could. But you talked about, in your comments, you talked about underhanded, doing things backdoor, talking, lobbying back and forth. What about December 1916, in 2016, when you called me up and says, "Hey, Paul, let's go for a ride, and let's look around the county, and let's look at the things that I've developed, and I developed here, and I developed there. Oh, and look at this nice set of storage sheds that we have here on South Three, or on Route Three, on the south end of town." Two months later, you're in front of the Planning Commission, asking us to put more storage sheds up on 57. What are you trying to do? You're trying to lobby me behind the scenes to get, to get what you want? And now you're accusing these people? Get out of here. You know? No, but nobody can buy me, and nobody can accuse anybody in this town of being bought. All right?
I could be bought, right?
I am offended. I'm insulted. And you're a discredit to this organization, Stan. I don't care how all these other people feel. That's what I see in you.
All right, thank you.
I'm done.
Oh. I'm trying to push you.
Okay, all right.
Wait, there's more.
And I've had too much water. But this weekend, we, there was a rally on the square for, "Where are the kids?" Did you know that over 460,000 kids go missing every year? 460,000 kids go missing every year. That's a shame. And here we are, we're talking about 100 and some odd people dying, getting sick and dying of a virus. Well, these kids are going missing. Their parents never see them again. They have no idea what happens to them. We need to work on this. And Miles, I don't know if you put that up, there's a savethechildren.org to go and get more information. And if you suspect anything where kids are being trafficked, or any human is being trafficked, give the National Human Trafficking Hotline a call at 888-373-7888. It should be on your screen. We need to work to help these kids. This is, it's a sin. It's an outrage that this should happen. In this day and age, you know, we addressed slavery earlier this evening. Well, these kids, slavery's going on right now with these kids. Okay? They're being pimped out, or whatever you want to call it. We need to stop it. Those are bigger problems in this community, and in this state, and in this nation, that we need to address and address properly. And as I said before, with Pastor Ruffin and Pam Miller, I would be more than willing to work and open that dialogue and keep that dialogue going. I've had the pleasure, the past couple of weeks, of improving my conversations with Pastor Ruffin, and that is going to continue, without a doubt. So, again, my vote to abstain was because I agree with, we have to get the message out that we are anti-racism. I disagree with the wording of that legislation, and that is all. So, thank you all very much. Your turn, John.
Well, since everything's been said, I guess I'll just say, thanks for coming, and the meeting's adjourned.
I got a real quick one. I got to go again, because I didn't know what Paul was going to say.
I got to go.
Locally, if you want to work with the children, human trafficking, you can contact Bailey Ewing and Beth Ewing, who do the Human Trafficking Coalition for Medina County. You can also contact Rhonda Wergler at the Medina Children's Center. Just those quick resources, real quick, on a local level.
Okay, thank you. The meeting's adjourned.
Sorry, John, I just had...